Call the meeting total, let the record show that this is a joint, excuse me, a regular city council meeting held on Monday, July 18th. All members of council are present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. You are welcome to join us, or you're welcome to sit. Thank you very much. The reason why we did it that way, as opposed to the way that we've done it in the past, according to the Supreme Court, we are allowed to pray at a council meeting, but we are not allowed to coerce you into praying with us at a council meeting. So, in order to be okay with the law, that's what we did. Sounds silly to me, too. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we move, that we change the agenda and switch item one and item two, such that we go into executive session now for the purposes identified in the agenda, which are discussion incident to contractual matters as it pertains to a land swap, agreement with Madam E. Holmes, and legal advice pertaining to sewer service for cadence development.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any discussion? The reason why we're doing this is because the person who's supposed to be here for the joint meeting with the planning commission is stuck on 77. So, it's going to take us, take him a little bit of time. So with that said, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We're in executive session. Talk amongst yourselves. Counsel is back in open session while in executive session. No votes were taken, other than to return to open session. Only the items on the agenda were discussed. Now, we're going to go up to item number two, which is the joint public hearing with the planning commission. And at this time, I'm going to train it, turn it over to the planning chair, Jerry Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'd like to open up the special planning commission meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2016. And first up, I want to call to order the public hearing regarding rezoning plan for TMS number 644-00-00-016, and 644-00-00-027, and 644-00-00-038, and 644-00-00-039, and 644-00-00-042 from RUD in the county, and 644-01-01-030, and 644-01-01-031 from B1 in the city, and 644-01-01-344 from B2 in the city to PDD in the city. And I think Susan has some more information for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, and Counsel. The applicant is proposing to annex and rezone approximately 40.58 acres and rezone approximately 38.03 acres between Dam Road and Stonecrest Boulevard as a planned development district. Total development acreage is 78.60 acres. Uses proposed within the PD are a mix of commercial, retail, office, hospitality, entertainment, athletic, institutional, and residential types and densities. Specific uses outlined are two-level sports facility, a 14-screen theater complex, 150-room hotel, a four-level parking garage, a park, medical and professional offices, general retail and commercial, and a mix of residential, including upper-floor boutique apartments over retail space. The subject property is located in an area identified in the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan and future land use map as an entertainment and activity district. The intent of this district is to provide opportunities and incentives to create and promote environments that are conducive to cultural and social engagement. Vertical mixed uses shall be permitted in multi-level buildings with ground floor, restaurant, entertainment venues with upscale boutique apartments or office suites located on the upper floors. Typical uses as outlined in the comp plan are parks and athletic facilities, theater facilities, social retail uses, office, hospitality, and mixed residential. In addition, the district outlines a street concept that encourages connectivity between uses and a link between Dam Road and Stonecrest Boulevard. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning is appropriate because it is compatible with and serves to implement the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan. At this time, I would like to introduce Brad Sorallo and his development team, who will provide a presentation on this development.
Counsel, tonight, we would like to share with you our vision, which is game on. It is a 300,000-square-foot sports complex. Our goal and our mission that we've set out to is to create a lifestyle for the Carolinas. With what we have developed, 300,000 square feet under roof, it will offer a very unique concept to this region, to the city. It will offer, be a gathering place for the community. It will also address the, all of the sports and recreational needs that not only Teague K., Fort Mill, York County, everything within this region that's needed. And it will promote a togetherness, a family time, and a place to truly congregate and come together. Some of the highlights inside of the facility, we will have a high-performance sports academy, eight collegiate-sized basketball courts, four full-size multipurpose fields for play consisting of soccer, lacrosse, football, field hockey. Also, a total of 11 indoor and outdoor tennis courts, 35,000 square feet of fitness facility, an aquatic center, which will house two pools, one being a 50-meter Olympic-sized, and also a resort-themed pool on the outside. We will offer medical and urgent care, physical therapy, rehab, along with restaurants and shops on property. Here's a couple of images, the first being of the aquatic center, and the second being of the main facility. We've separated those into two buildings. Number-one reason is air quality control for the aquatic center. If you've ever been into any swim facility, that's the number-one concern. So with doing this and how we've laid it out and presented it, it'll be something that we're able to really monitor and control. Going into the first floor, here's just a brief overview of the facility. Down the right side, you can see our concentration on basketball. In addition to, on the lower level, we have pre-K4 classrooms, which opens up the ability for partnerships through the community, gives us an offering to the school system to give back. In addition, there's medical space, there's physical therapy, there's multiple restaurants on site, one on the lower level, which services everything to the aquatic center. As you can see, the outdoor resort pool with the two pools in the aquatic center in the rear, the tennis courts, tennis facilities. As you move to the second level, we decided to integrate an entertainment aspect as well. We've incorporated eight bowling lanes with a restaurant, which would have exterior entrance in order to stay open later for the community and to provide that entertainment feature that's been missing in Teague K. Multiple locker rooms on both levels, which helps with the venue side of things, to whereas when we do have large events, you have plenty of space for all the participants. You don't have, if you've been in any of these large sports centers, kids are climbing the walls, nowhere to go, nowhere to put their bags. So, we've laid it out in a manner that will allow everybody to have space, and it also will not overrun the membership base, which is a core priority for the facility. As you look at the map there, Village A is where we propose to put game on. Village B, the green section, would be the hotel. We feel as those two are synergistic, and we would like those to be phase one, and the first step in the, our priority is to have those come out of ground. With what we're creating, we see the demand and the need for not only youth sports and the performance of it, but truly a community and a gathering spot. And that's been our focus from day one. We don't want to compromise that in any way. With the addition of boutique apartments above retail, that allows us to get into an international training, which some of my colleagues have had the experience in, that opens up a great summer facility for kids to travel and for families to travel, and just really gives us the ability to take not only our facility, but Teague K. to the next level. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mike Brown, who represents Mikami Design in Wakefield Beasley, and he can speak further on the overall development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Good afternoon. I'm Mike Brown, Mikami Design Studio, located in Jacksonville, Florida. As Brad alluded to, I'm representing WBA Architects. I retired from there last year. Got some elderly parents that need a lot of time spent with them, and my wife's business Mikami. So, I still represent WBA as a partner, and will talk about some aspects of WBA. My colleagues couldn't be here tonight, though. That said, Brad has explained Village A basically in Village B. The balance of the property as it moves towards Stonecrest, we felt that those parcels really needed to be indigenous to the products that were along the existing edge now, and those are all residential, single-family home, very beautiful communities. So, we slated Village G for a residential use with the one connection point you see there. We don't have a defined product for it. We're in the planning stages, particularly the land use planning assessment. So, we haven't designed a product, and then at the end of the day, we just don't have a specific design. But they will complement the properties that are across the street. We felt that that edge was important, particularly the way the road has been treated and care has been given to the design. Village D, we have positioned for a number of uses. We don't have a specific use assigned or a specific design for it now, but at this point, we've looked at assisted living, aged care facility, or a product that would be a high-performance, some type of school, in which we're still looking at that program as it would relate to sports. But we see a need in other communities we develop and design around the nation where assisted living, being a part of this, is important, as I continue to try to tell my parents that. You know, life is about birth, all the, this big spectrum of things to do, and so we've tried to create a true mixed-use lifestyle that attaches to every age group as well. So, that's what Village D is slated for. Village C, as Brad indicated, is, we proposed it for a mixed-use atmosphere that could incorporate the boutique apartments. We've been very successful, again, around the nation in large mixed-use communities, and there's even some here in Charlotte that were done before us, that we looked at and championed and said, wow, this is the way to do some neat things. And a lot of things have evolved since then. Burke Dale Village is a good example. So, we believe that Village C is slated for a very boutique, nicely-designed, positioned property that would incorporate the residential product above retail, professional, or commercial. And then, as you look at the site, there's one thing that Brad may not have made clear. The black lines that you see on there are just proposed circulation routes. Our goal with the property, albeit physical constraints stopped us in some areas, was to make sure all the sites had interconnectivity and could use each, use, easily use each other without having to go back out on Stonecrest or Dam Road. And a lot of that emphasis was made in pedestrian and bicycle routes, because we'd like to program Village F, I save that one for last, which is the, our open space. We'd like to just have it seamlessly morph into our open playfields and the natural surrounds that are there. The configuration of it wasn't driven by design or building placement necessarily, it was driven by the natural constraints that are on the site. And that leg that shapes like it does essentially represents the topographic area and some of the low areas to the property, which we felt were better suited to create buffers, to create jogging trails, vider trails, and things of that nature. So, that's really the wholesale review of the site plan and what our intentions are. We have created flexibility on sites C, D, and E, so some of the things inside the land uses, you can't get all of those on there, and there's no goal to do that. Our goal is to make sure that each site has a respective relationship with the other in terms of mixed use and connectivity, and the scaling is appropriate for the size of the facility.
Very good.
I have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Bottom right, where it says open spaces, are there any plans for, is that property that you guys have, Brad, or is that?
Open spaces.
Okay. It's all going to be part of.
Yes, sir. That arrow points up to that.
It's an exciting concept, for sure.
Thank you.
Very, very exciting.
Thank you. We've evolved the building, obviously, a lot farther, the game on building. There's a lot of study and a lot of emphasis, and some of the things that Brad may talk about later were important to vet out in the design of the building, because it fits one way.
Great. I'm sorry, you might have mentioned it, but who is the intended users of Village F?
Village F has access from all of the properties, all of the properties.
So, members?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the Village F is...
All the residents, all the...
Okay.
In that, in that development, they're interconnected, and the goal is to keep them connected. So, they'd be a natural area that you could come back through Village C and go across to Village A without having to use a car. But you could use the car, the road is there as well.
All right. And Village C for the boutique apartments, was mentioned the international rental opportunities?
Mm-hmm.
So, are these, what type of, I guess, short-term rentals?
They would be. What we've talked to date, because of the international level, everybody has different expectations. What we have, worked use successfully in the past is that those would be corporate apartments. We would have those, and depending on the scaling of them, and who came and who would use them.
And this is all preliminary?
No, I can also, excuse me. The idea behind that would be game on would, we would be the ones in control of a small amount of the units, 10%, 15%. And that way, when our students come in and do their training, we're using them as a dormitory-style living for them, but we would own and control those, so it would not be short-term leases in that manner. Maybe 20, 25 units, which gives us the flexibility to not constantly put them in the hotel and gives them a month where they can stay in and participate in aquatics or basketball, whatever that may be, and we would have that housing opportunity for them.
Okay. Just to clarify, the properties are all under contract, so all the, I've had some residents ask, are their properties up for grab? But I was pretty sure that you guys have already contacted all potential landowners for this development.
That's it. Well, at this point, we've had a lot to wrap our arms around. We have not gone after any additional properties for additional uses at this time. But we do feel like the value we create will enhance and help all surrounding properties.
Thank you. Pretty cool.
Ryan, anything? Dottie?
I'm good, thank you.
David?
Back to you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, like to open it now for public comments. I think we had a couple people sign up, and, well, come to the mic and, hm? Get to come to the mic, your name, address.
I've got to say the whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm Judy Cowell. Tom is my husband, sitting there. We live at 669 Reliance Court in Serenity Point.
Yeah.
Age, blood type?
No, you're good at that point.
Social security number?
Well, maybe.
Well, sure.
Am I good?
Give it some.
All right. Well, I don't know a lot about this, other than what we have been told. We have all been a very good job. The road that we can see at the very bottom of that, that looks gray, is that, is that Stonecrest, or what road is that, that we can see there?
Sorry. The road on the right side that follows along the right side of that, that's in gray, that is Dam Road, over where the red parcels, which are C, D, and E, to the left of those is Stonecrest Boulevard.
Okay. All right. So, as I was thinking about this in general, not knowing really anything about it, of course, the residents on Stonecrest who are, live in homes there, and they're going to be very nice homes, those that, you know, the latest developer is building, and we have one person here tonight who lives there, I'm assuming that the lighting would be quite an issue for the residents who are facing that. And so, we would like perhaps some information on that. And the road quality of Stonecrest is not great at present, and never has been, especially as you get closer to Dam Road. And there, we had a lot of discussion with the developer for Serenity Point and so forth, and who's going to pay for what, and all of that. So, that would be a question that we would be interested in knowing also. And I just wonder, is that green one back there, is that Village B?
Yeah.
Is Village B closer to Dam Road or...
It's, it's near, it's on Dam Road, near the rear entrance to Walmart?
Yeah.
Is where Village B is?
That big white box right above, that is Walmart, to give you a little perspective.
Okay, so it's close to Walmart?
Correct.
So, the entrance, is the entrance into that development across from Stonecrest Villas?
You have some entrances across from Stonecrest Villas into the residential portions of this project, and then you have other entrances off of Dam Road into the more commercialized area, the product that he was, that the developer just showed, where the athletics and the entertainment area. Those entrances come off of Dam Road.
So, now where the entrance of Dam Road will be is between houses that are presently there?
He's, it's going to be basically where the salvage yard is, off of Dam Road.
Oh, so we won't see that anymore?
That's correct.
No salvage yard.
I don't think he'll leave it there. I think he'll, he'll get rid of that as he builds his development.
They'll cover it up with something, though, if they leave.
I think they'll haul it off. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good questions, thanks.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, we have another person sign up. Come on up, John.
John Sherwood, Tampa Place, but I signed up for public comments. I didn't sign up to talk about this particular thing.
So, that's where my list went for public comments?
Ding, ding, ding.
Thank you, Jerry.
There you go.
You know, I thought I was losing it.
Oh, you are, but...
Okay. I guess there'll be no more public comments. Are there any comments or questions from counsel?
No, sir.
I think we're good.
I'd like to actually have them address the lighting on the fields, as well as the Stonecrest Road.
I think it's premature.
We included in the written narrative that we were going to abide by current lighting philosophies, which our firm does, because of the scale of projects we do. We don't have a dark skies ordinance here, but in terms of our firm, we think like that. And so, with the technology that's out there, LED, low cutoff lighting, in fact, we had this discussion when writing the narrative, the planning director asked if, what the low cutoff was, did they cut off early, or what were you trying to do there? And we specifically were trying to integrate low glare, low light wash to neighbors, things of that nature. And that's something that you look for in your new products that are being developed and built here, and as, just as a firm, we do it as a natural. So, what that means is all the lights that would be along Stonecrest that were mentioned earlier, those would be low cutoff or LED shoebox lighting that would be complementary to what they've used across the street to illuminate the community, the same type of community, with same type of street lighting. Any commercial building lighting, again, would be low cutoff. We would have to illuminate the parking lots, obviously, for safety reasons. But again, there are lights out there that, you know, are they on, or are they not on? Everything's glowing, but I don't see a light. So, that's the practice that we pursue, and that's what our engineers pursue. While absent of a dark skies ordinance, we're still going to apply that. In terms of the field play, though, obviously, the lights have to be taller, and we've got a lot, larger area to address. Again, there are technologies out there that we're researching now to do that, because we want to be good neighbors. We don't want to have light wash. And we specifically positioned the main building in the center of the site, for lack of better words, in the middle of the salvage yard that's there now. So, so not only could we insulate the scale of the building, as you've seen the elevation, so from a distance, it's proportional to the site, and also the lighting around the building and the parking. And we've worked hard to surround the other parcels, even on the commercial edges, with foreground buildings, which would help reduce that, large parking areas and which bring large lighting solutions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
I think that's great. For Stonecrest Boulevard, I know that you'll be doing, in the process of doing a traffic impact analysis.
Yes.
And so that residents understand, whatever is recommended, based on that, that you guys would have to comply and pay for, so that road improvements, whatever that would be, anything that you guys are touching, basically?
That's correct.
With the property.
We've put in the PD that we're bound by the streets, regulations, subdivision regulations, and the guidelines that you have. We haven't asked for anything short of what you're already enforcing, because it's good design.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Any more questions from counsel? No, sir. Any questions from the commission?
I've got one Village F. When we talked about last Monday, my understanding was, are those going to be like fields or whatever, Alton Fields, or whatever they were, the bike trails, et cetera. Now, you said that's for residents. Is that going to be residents and paying members just of this?
No, sir. There'll be connectivity throughout the community, so coming off of Stonecrest, there'll be trails through, walking trails through there, biking trails, where everybody can enter onto the property. Absolutely. So, if you're coming over to a restaurant, and you decide to walk there or bike there, you're through the trails through Village F, I believe what Mike was trying to help everyone understand is that Village F will touch all of the others, so there's connectivity that way, as opposed to just having bike trails or walking trails end in a certain village. We want that circulation throughout the community.
During the preliminary disclosure for the plan through the planning meetings, planning board, it was my understanding that the only apartments that would be, that are designed into this are those that are strictly above retail space and so forth. Did I misunderstand you 20 minutes ago to say that there are other apartments being planned elsewhere in the...
No, sir.
Okay, great. That I misunderstood. Thank you.
And you're right, you said you're all correct.
And you're pretty, you said you're all correct. It's a vertically integrated product, because of the site, and we can do more with design. And the PDD does specifically state, I went in and kinda split some hairs, and said that the residential portion could touch the ground at the leasing office, so that way people could come in and then go up. And, and, and the amenities would, could be on the ground, i.e. the swimming pool, if there is one. But we believe that a 350,000 square foot sports facility is a pretty good amenity, and that pool's gonna be nicer, and you should go over there, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, are there any more questions? Well, a comment from me is, this is pretty exciting from a citizen's point of view. But I guess as the planning commission, we're gonna go back and discuss whether or not this is the appropriate zoning for this, for these properties. And so, if there's no more question, I'd like to take, take a motion to close.
I'll move to the close of the public hearing.
Second to motion?
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, the meeting is closed.
Yep, I think it is.
Hot potato, hot potato. Well, first, I'm gonna amend the agenda, so that Charlie can make a statement about York County. And then, we're gonna do John Sherwood, public comments, and then...
You're gonna take your chairs and go? You don't have to do that, we're gonna keep going, so. At least, I think we are.
Hey, Charlie. 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 Not right now, no, I'm sorry.
We're still in our meeting, yeah. We're trying to be, anyway.
Charlie.
Council, I'm taking a motion to have a recess for five minutes.
Why?
'Cause the city manager just asked for one?
Oh, well, then I guess, I'd like to make a, very, I second your motion.
All in favor, single or saying aye?
Five minutes, no more. Just the golden oldies here.
Call the meeting back to order. Council, at this time, I'd like to amend the agenda one more time, and before public comments, I wanna add item number 3A, and that is gonna be a statement by Charlie Fundenberg, City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to second that?
Yeah.
Change to the agenda, I'd like to second that motion.
I made the motion, Dottie made the second, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, Charlie.
As many from, many in the public may be aware, as a press release was, was issued by York County over the weekend in regards to the county's first Zika virus confirmed here in York County. I believe it's the 18th one in the state. I was notified by the county manager on Friday night, and we had conversations through the weekend. SEDHEC is very limited due to HIPAA laws on what information they can release, other than the fact that they did confirm to the county that this individual, and forgive me, but this is how it was put to us, either lives in TEGK, or at least spent time in TEGK. Depending on at which point in time we talked to them, we got a different response. So at some point in time, there was someone at a, from what DEHAC has determined, at a critical time during the, this period, did have the Zika virus. They did contract this virus while traveling abroad. This morning, Mayor Shepherd and I met with York County officials, because they were talking about treating for mosquitoes in portions of TEGK. We were still, in my opinion, fat gathering. And this afternoon, York County held a press conference in regards to this, and what they were going to be doing. For those that are signed up through our communication systems, whether it's social media or notification process through our website, you did receive a release from us, kind of explaining this process, but basically, SEDHEC has told the county that they need to treat for mosquitoes within, basically, a thousand-yard diameter around the area, 500-yard radius around the area. And that is what their contractor is going to do, beginning Wednesday morning, as I have been alerted since this meeting started via email from the EOC Director Chuck Haynes. We have put information out, it is on our website, if you have questions, and this is to the general public, health, safety questions, things of that nature, in regards to this, there is a phone number on the front page of our website to the office with SEDHEC that is overseeing the, the Zika virus in regards to the state, and specifically this matter. Calling City Hall, I'd, we, myself and staff would love to assist you and answer any questions that you may have, but unfortunately, the information that I've provided here tonight, that is the information that we have. SEDHEC is very guarded on this information, as I said earlier, due to HIPAA laws. We have been trying to work with York County on this, yeah, trying to release the information as we knew it to be factual. But again, as we were still in what I believe to be the fact-finding phase of this, York County, in request to, from what they've told me, a large media request, or multiple media requests, held a press conference around 2:00 PM this afternoon, and informed the reporters there that this person either lived or spent time in TEGK. We're not even, have been notified at this point, when. I don't know if it was last week, if it was two weeks ago. SEDHEC found out about it Friday night, they called the EOC Director, who contacted the county manager, who contacted me. Again, series of phone conversations, questions throughout the weekend, followed up by more meetings this morning. And that is what we know at this point in time. The EOC Director has stated, at least from SEDHEC, that the person absolutely did not contract it from a mosquito bite here, they did contract it from abroad. They're treating the mosquitoes as a precautionary measure. As another point of information, we also heard from Duke Energy today. Mayor, you spoke with Rick Duran, I'll turn that portion over, over to you.
I got a phone call today from Rick Duran, who is the Vice President of Community Relations of Duke Energy, South Carolina. Rick sent me an email at 4:52 this afternoon to confirm what we had discussed. Duke Energy began its 93rd annual reservoir mosquito control season, which includes Lake Wiley on May 2nd. The program runs net, from now until October, and there are 69 different species of mosquitoes in the Carolinas. More information than I ever wanted to know. Specifically, Duke will be treating our area this week as a standard operating procedure, and they treat it once, and then come back around a month later and reapply for a second time. Again, this is the 93rd time that Duke is treating mosquitoes in our area, just as precautionary measures. Duke has a lot of information on their website about mosquito control, so if you wanna find more information about this, I also suggest that as a resource. Not quite sure why the county did not contact Duke themselves to find out what's going on, but that's a conversation for another day, I think. I think we have done what we have been asked to do, as far as learning, alerting the public, and what we're gonna be doing forward. I'm not quite sure, I'm, I like the idea of what the county is doing in far, as far as the treatment and the mosquitoes, and I'm sure we'll have more conversations about that going forward, or their way they're planning on doing it. That's, that's what I know, Charlie. That's what we know.
Yes.
Council did meet last night, and discussed the situation, and discussed what we thought we should do, and how we should handle it. There was at one point where the county was telling us that we would have to pay a portion of it, and I'm gonna go right on record now, as far as I'm concerned, if they're not gonna pay for mosquito treatments in Brayton, they're not gonna charge us for mosquito treatments either, because we are members of the county as well, we pay taxes to the county just as well as Brayton does, which is what I mentioned to York County Councilman this afternoon, as well as York County Chairman, so they can do what they want with that bill. That's all I have to say, item number three on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments, yes, John Sherwood, Tepa Place?
John Sherwood, Tepa Place, was definitely not the day to pick the early comment thing today. Lot of great information, thank you very much for sharing everything on the Zika. I usually get up here and freewheel, but I actually had to write some stuff down because of the environment that we're in right now, so I just wanted to take a few minutes. I'm not a great reader, and I don't write well either.
Great.
Legibly. So, this could be challenging. But often, I offer comments here, and they're typically for councils, city manager staff, to, to understand what, what we're thinking out here on this side of the podium. And many times, there's suggestions to try to make our lives a little bit easier, you know, website access, blah, blah, blah. Just trying to get the good life, you know, the, the TEGK, good life that we had as our, I think as our moniker at one point, I don't, I don't even know if it still is, I'll be honest with you.
It is.
But today, you know, we have to acknowledge that there's stuff that's going on outside of TEGK. You know, we have a great little place here, it's, it's a heaven, we get, we're tops of every ward. Everybody recognizes, says that's a great place to be. But Zika has somehow found our walls. You know, we had an incident, unfortunate incident with one of the residents recently. I mean, things are happening here that are just atypical. And, you know, terrorism, societal protests around the country, fiscal concerns for the nation and, and localities. The brain-eating amoeba thing that happened up in, at the Whitewater place. You know, often, people don't understand if, if that brain-eating amoeba thing is, is actually in our lake water. So, you know, some of these things, it's, it's easy to, to say we should know it, or, or, or it's, it's out there, but the public doesn't typically, I mean, they're, they're all mowing grass and trying to get their clippins out on, you know, every other Monday or something. You know, I mean, there, there's a lot of other things going on that they're doing, not focused like you folks are, to, you know, what's going on here. Our heart go out to everybody, you know, in all of the situations that we have, you know, it's, I mean, just, just pick one right now, what's going on across the country. But today, I think that we should have a discussion about settling the collective nerves that we have, and, and coming together as a community with the police, fire, emergency services. People, the people that rely on all those services, all should get together somehow. I, I'd like to lead as an example, as our community, to, to invite the Steve, Stephen, Parker, Spanky, you know, or Chief, whoever it is that's in charge of emergency services, to, to really kinda do some kinda drop-in style thing that we have, versus, they come up here, give a presentation to whoever watches CNN 2, the same 12 people see it, and we don't have an opportunity. I'd love to be able to have an opportunity to have a more bonding experience, where the people get a chance to meet those who serve us, and vice versa, and we get to exchange humanity. And that's, I, I heard the beep, so, I had a little bit more, but that's what I got, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
David?
Any more public comments?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table items 6A and 7B to a later date.
I have a motion by David O'Neil, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hersi, any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number four on the agenda, are the regular city council meeting minutes from June 30th? Council, are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Sorry? Sorry, June 20th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number 5A on the agenda is a fire department equipment presentation, Chief Scott Zabanski.
Fire Chief Scott Zabanski, AKA Spanky. We've been working with the fire department, it's been working very hard on grants, we've been pushing it. Charlie directed us, he wanted to see more grants, so we wanna get more than any other department, so we've been, we're working on five, six, seven grants right now. But recently, we got two grants, one from Duke Power for, for nuclear plant, and then another one from the Municipal Association. And basically, what that did allows to buy three TICs, which stands for thermal imaging cameras. These aren't the big tits that we keep around, the eight, 10,000, these are about $1,200 apiece. We bought one, we got two for free, alright, with that grant money. These are individual cameras that go right on the guy's gear when they get off the truck. And you guys come up there?
Yep.
Hand them out. We're gonna turn off the lights and show you how they work. They're great for multiple reasons. Each guy has his own camera, he can use to find a hotspot. If we're doing a 360 around a building, there's a fire on the roof, we can tell it's under the roof. If we, if a firefighter gets disoriented and he gets lost, he pulls off his tick, and he can find his way out through the smoke and everything. So it's a great safety thing. I think George has the big one, don't touch any of those buttons on the big ones. The little ones just goes off and out.
What does this red one do?
Very simple, alright? And if you look on the right-hand side, there's a temperature gauge. And if you look in the middle, there's a bullseye, you point that bullseye at whatever, you can tell the temperature of the person, or the wall, behind the wall, if there's fire behind the wall. So we know where to attack the wall and tear out the sheetrock and...
Are you not feeling well, 'cause this says you're 80, 88 degrees?
It's true.
Mine's see-through.
Oh, hey, hey, point that someplace else.
That's the one at the station.
Alright, that's...
Let's turn off the camera, and also, a good demonstration.
Turn off the lights.
If the guys put the, their hands on the doors, like someone's trying to get out, then they fall down, we walk in, and we're looking above the door, you just, you'll see their handprints. You know, walking up the door, reaching for the knob. And if you go hunting, they're great for hunting, too. Looking, and looking for critters in trees.
We can't make it dark in here? That's pretty cool. It's unfortunately, one extra thing you have to carry, I guess, with everything else you have going on.
On the top of the little ones, there's a little thing that pops up, hooks right on your gear.
Cool, well, that's great, thanks for getting them, that's, that's wonderful, it's a safety thing.
You're gonna turn off the lights?
Plus, you can find me if you...
Alright, now look to the back. You'll see, check that door.
Just for a second.
For a second.
Just for a second.
Just for a second. Stand, look through your... I see where James is, he's standing around. Now look at it. I see the handprints.
I see Jerry, I see James, I see Michelle, I see some... Telling my age.
You gotta understand, it's gonna be completely dark, can't see anything, don't look right through the skull.
Hey, Scott.
That is cool.
James, would you come here a second?
The kids probably wanna see this.
Would you take that over to those young people over there, and let them see what it's all about?
Thank you very much.
The little ones, we get supposed to deal with about $1,200 apiece. And the big one there, James taking off for the kids, run around between 8,000 and 10,000. That one can videotape. So, you work to the like we're gonna get.
Sorry.
The big one is about eight to 10,000 hours, has a lot more functions, it videotapes, I think, for three hours. Car chargers, you know, all of them. This one doesn't videotape, this is strictly one person to use it for their personal use. Whether you find the person, find the body, find someone to save him, find a hotspot, find fire behind the wall. A lot of times, we get alarms, alarms going off, people go, oh, there's no fire. When you get there, and you rip a hole in the wall, there's the fire. It's electrical wire burning or something, so we can do this real easy. Great for fireplaces, on the walls of fireplaces, when the carousel comes out, we get fires upstairs. Go up in that dark attic, oh, there it is, you know.
Wow, very neat.
This is like one ninth.
There you go.
That's about right.
It's about right.
That's the blood pressure.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, good work.
Item number five... Item number 5B on the agenda is Camp Cadet. And this will be coming from the other testosterone side of the locker room. We now have the police chief.
Chief.
I don't have any cool toys today, but...
Yet.
What I wanted to do was spend just a second about Camp Cadet and thank a few people and tell you a little bit about what we did and how we did it. And also, since I'm up here and I got a mic, I got to say that please continue to be praying for law enforcement across the country. It's something that's heavy on my heart and knowing that I'm getting, receiving things that I can say, some that I can't. But we're receiving death threats in our state with law enforcement. So just continue to pray for all law enforcement across the country. I want to take a minute to thank numerous people in specific, but there's a lot that have to go with it. But for Camp Cadet, I want to thank Alan Spain, Devin Silinger, who's, she's the daughter of a fireman, Hope McBride, Chief Zemanski, the fire department as a whole. Also, wanted to make sure I recognize Fort Mill School District and Tommy Smallsy in specific. Everybody worked together for this project. The project was to bring children together to learn about public safety while at the same time, teaching them leadership skills and teaching them that we're their friends and we're there for them. It's important in today's society. It went flawlessly, almost, besides the amoeba at the Whitewater Center because we had to go to the Whitewater Center on Thursday and I got a call, thank goodness, on Wednesday that they had that. And so we suspended the water activities. But the camp included SWAT bomb, K-9 demonstration, and a police simulation machine, which goes through different things that we have to go through scenarios every day. On Tuesday, we went to Wet and Wild, which was a great day. On Wednesday, they spent the entire day with the fire department, learning about fire safety. It was incredible. The kids loved it. On Thursday, we did go to the Whitewater Center and the kids had a great time. We just didn't go in the water, but we had zip lining, rope course, different things like that. It was outstanding. And then Friday, we went down to the law enforcement training center. And then we came back and we played kickball with the kids. They were a little cocky, so we had to beat them in the last kickball game. But anyways, it was a great day all in all. And wanted to thank everybody who was involved in it. And just also remind that we have a golf tournament September 23rd that raises the funds for this camp. The campers pay nothing for all of this through the fundraisers. So just wanted to remind everybody for that and thank everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Be careful out there, Chief.
Item number 5C on the agenda are the land and boat parade winners. This year, we had a phenomenal parade. Phenomenal parade. The participation was incredible. And I'd like to thank Emily Jakeley, is the head of the CRC, for all the hard work she and her group put together to make sure that this parade came off without a hitch, once again.
Thanks, Emily.
So this year's land parade winners is Lake Shore Christian Fellowship. And you guys would come up?
See, they had God on their side. That's why they won.
Congratulations.
You're very welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Take the hands of the rest of the...
Congrats. Glad you had fun. Come on up, sweetie, get in the picture. Get in the picture. Get in the picture.
Were you guys there? Did you see it?
We did.
Here, take a photo with the girls and the mayor and somebody. Turn around, look at the camera.
Y'all can come up here.
Hey, guess what?
I can get a picture with the mayor. This is special.
Not really.
You're the only one that thinks so, but...
My wife disagrees with you.
She doesn't think you're special or she doesn't? No.
She doesn't want a picture with you.
Pick up the little one so she can get in the photo.
All right, on three, everybody. Cheese.
All right.
We expect you to duplicate or do better next year. All right?
Hey, love. Hey, love.
Hey, we just, we pray for you guys. We're so thankful for you guys. And we love that we're like one of the only churches that we know of, like right in the middle of Tika. And we just, we hold you guys up regularly, our police force, our city council. And we're just so thankful for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
And our boat parade winners are Paul and Denise Sorenson. And I understand Paul could not be here, so you're going to...
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Hey, did you ever think about running a boat parade? She wants to take your picture.
Thank you. Item number 6B on the agenda is the capital improvements program recommendations by the planning commission, Susan Britt.
She's not here.
Yes, she is. I have Susan Britt, but Charlie can do it.
Approved.
Sorry, I was looking on the agenda where it said Charlie, but apparently it is me. At the regular meeting on June 13th, the planning commission voted to adopt a resolution recommending adoption of the capital improvement program and consideration of that program in development of future city budgets.
Do you need a motion from us? No, okay, great. Item number 6C on the agenda is the PRT commission appointments. Council, as you are aware, last month, we had these applications. We went back to staff and asked them for more information. They've given us more information. We're passing the ballots down to Charlie. He will tell us the winners and then we will vote to approve them onto the PRT commission. Item number 7A on the agenda is the introduction of the first read to adopt an ordinance to the city of Tika K's 2015-2025 Capital Improvements Program. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the 2015 to 2025 Capital Improvements Program. We did have a typo in the packet. The Capital Improvements Program was a component of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan approved by city council. The enclosed CIP does reflect the capital expenses identified by your department heads and additional items that were identified during the joint workshop with the planning commission. Kara Drain from Catawba Cog is here with us tonight and has a presentation, a brief presentation to run through for council and for the viewing audience at home. So if that's okay with council, I'd like to turn it over to her at this time before we move forward with this.
Hey, Kara, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My name is Kara Drain. I'm senior planner with Catawba Regional Council of Governments. It's been our pleasure to work with you on this project over the past year. And as Charlie said, I just have a brief presentation that's kind of a snapshot of the capital improvements program. So the capital improvements program, or CIP, as more commonly called, has many benefits. And I know that you know the process that we started was with your department directors who provided project details that listed project needs over the next 10 years with projected cost, identified revenues, and also looked at if it was a new item, capital item, what would be the projected operating expenses. And so it's really a guide. And that's what we talked about at your workshop in May. And, but it's a guide that helps you plan for future delivery of public services. Your comprehensive plan compatibility, the projects, there are approximately 70 projects in the CIP. And those 68 projects all are compatible. These are seven of the nine elements in your comprehensive plan. And so the CIP is a tool, just like your zoning and subdivision regulations. It helps implement the goals and values that you have in your comprehensive plan. So the proposed project expenditures, this slide shows the project expenditures by department and by fiscal year. And you can see in blue, that is Parks and Recreation. And of course, Catawba Park is a large capital project. And then you also see the police department. The police department is in orange. They have a facility, a new facility, and vehicles that are within their department. And then the fire department is in the navy color at the top. And of course, they have a new facility, trucks and additional equipment. But these items, you can see too, by department, which departments have more immediate and short-term needs versus those that are more constant over the 10-year program. And then the project funding sources. This particular slide shows the projected funding sources that were identified by the department directors. And you can see that while this does not show the individual departments and the projects, it does show you by fiscal year what the projected sources of funding will be to fund the projects. And I will note that, while I said that it was a guide, as you go through your budgets each year, there may be projects that were identified in the CIP as a long-term project. Based on changes, it may become short-term or immediate. Or it may be a project that was placed in a certain fiscal year that based on if there was new revenues that were identified, those projects could be done sooner. If you look in the capital improvements program, by department, you can see a summary for each project, the revenues and also, excuse me, the expenses, projected expenses, and the projected sources of funding for each project. So Information Technology is the first department. And of course, they have one project that's listed for a citywide network. And this is upgrades to your communication. Development Services, they have three projects, two main projects, which include replacement of vehicles and software. For Operations, you'll see for Operations and Utilities that these departments have more capital projects. Operation has 14. And you can see that their three main include the yardways, processing, recycle facility, equipment storage facility, and the leaf removal vacuum truck. For the Utilities Department, there are nine projects. There are two main projects for the vacuum jetter truck. And of course, we have the water storage tank that's listed here. I will note that these two departments have several items that are shared between them that you notice that is noted as 50%. Operations, 50%. Utilities. Parks and Recreation, this is an image of Catawba Park. If we talk about compatibility with your comprehensive plan, that project would be a main example of that because it not only implements your vision statement you have in your comprehensive plan, but it's reflected in all your values that you have for the community. The Fire Department, with the fire chief's example of the equipment that he showed you tonight, they have the three items, three main items that they have, of course, that include the fire station, a new fire truck, and then self-contained breathing apparatuses, which includes, that will be replacement that are projected over the 10 years. They have a total of six projects. The Police Department has 10, they have 10 projects. Their two main projects are the Police Department Facility and Patrol Vehicles. And then lastly, we have the Golf Club. You remember that's listed as an appendix in the CIP. They have a multitude of projects. A lot of their projects include replacement items that help them maintain the level of service to the community. And they have three main projects, which is upgrading the irrigation, replacement of the golf cart fleet, and then also two fairway units. Those are the three main ones you see in pink, yellow, and green. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
I don't have any.
Is this meant to go over specific items that have changed since our workshop?
No, those specific items are probably going to be part of our budget workshop, which will be on Wednesday.
All of the items that were mentioned in the budget, or excuse me, in the previous workshop, either as they weren't included, or they weren't in there and it was recommended that they be added to there, those have been added, excuse me, added. And ones where it was discussed as far as the timing of some of those, those timings have been adjusted based on the conversation at the workshop in the document in your packet.
Okay. And is it still available online, the entire, because it was recorded, that workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
It was very lengthy.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was a lot of healthy discussion. I was really impressed.
Yeah, it is still, if they go to the agendas and minutes for that date, they'll see the video.
Right, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Kara, thank you very much for all your hard work. It's really great to have all that together so we can see what we're planning for in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Item number 7C on the agenda is the planning commission recommendation regarding the rezoning. Susan Britt is what I have down here. Do you need to make a motion? Capital improvements? Need a motion there? Yep. Needs a motion. Go for it. All right. We need to go back and finish that item. Ryan paying attention. 7A.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt the city of Tika K's 2015 through 2025 Capital Improvements Program.
Motion by Ryan Rochard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, seeing what's saying, aye?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. All right, now we'll go on to 7C.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The planning commission, after I think some really good discussion, and have voted to recommend approval of the rezoning of the tax map numbers as listed in your ordinance to be rezoned to planned development district within the city.
All right, so that was the recommendation. They approved that, correct? I'm sorry. Okay. Item number 7D on the agenda. Item number 7D on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to annex and zone and zone the following properties or tax map numbers. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As the mayor stated, this next item is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex and rezone the following tax map numbers. 644-0000-016, 027, 038, 039, and 042, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. Just so everyone that's playing from home kind of understands what we're doing here. With the project that was discussed during the public hearing, you have some properties that are already in the city and have a B1 and B2 zoning. That will be the next ordinance to rezone, for council to rezone, those is PDD. Some of the properties are in the county, not within our jurisdictional limits, which is what this ordinance addresses. And as we annex property, zoning has to be applied to it. Thus, the two ordinances. But it is all for that one same project that was discussed in the public hearing. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex and zone the following tax map numbers. 644-0000-016, 027, 038, 039, 042, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city.
A motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All in favor, seeing what's saying, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 7E on the agenda, which is the first reading of the introduction of ordinance to rezone the following tax map numbers. City manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As the mayor stated, this is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone the following tax map numbers. And for the record, those are 644-0101-030, 031, and 344, from B1 and B2 in the city to PDD in the city. And we would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie, council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion for introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone the following tax map numbers. 644-0101-030, 031, and 344 from B1 and B2 in the city to PDD in the city.
I have a motion by Ryan Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any council discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor, seeing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Wow. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report, Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Briefly, 4th of July has come and gone since our last meeting. Very well attended, thank you to Joey Blathen, Emily Jackley, and the rest of the CRC committee for all of their efforts, and all the volunteers that participated in that, all of our participants in the boat parade and land parade. Very well attended, fantastic fireworks show. So a lot of hard work going into that, and we definitely appreciate all their efforts. We do have a special council budget workshop this Wednesday, July 20th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and council, Sylvia did go ahead and put the packet for that in your drop box to, so you could go ahead and review those. The fire station Geo bond closing is going to be this Thursday. At about 11:30, we're finishing up on that. I have great news I'd like to share with council on that. We received, one, two, three, four, five, six bids from six different financial institutions on that, which was fantastic. If y'all will recall during the, as we were discussing this, we always used a financial model of 3% to show how this would work financially for the city. Due to the city's bond rating and our financial health, we were anticipating anywhere between 2.5% and 3%. Our lowest bid came from BBNT at 2.01% for 15 years, just phenomenal. Really impressed with that. What does that mean? Well, basically, it reduces our projected interest payments over the life of that bond by $208,000 that we would save based off of what our projections were going into this, so.
Super.
Fantastic with that. The contractor is already working, moving forward with the construction drawings. Hopefully, we will have a, we're looking to have a groundbreaking on that sometime this fall. So obviously, we'll keep council abreast of that as we move forward, but again, great stuff there. Two more things, in case you missed it on our Facebook page, but Lieutenant Kenny Salinger and his folks were awarded by CN2 the Hometown Hero Award for their efforts with a family out in Lakewood who had had a house fire. They had a young son that was then scared to go back upstairs to where his bedroom was. The guys were going by in their off time, as they had time when they were on duty, spent time with him. Yeah, just went over and beyond. I believe that family reached out to CN2 and nominated the crew, and they came out. And unfortunately, that day, it was extremely hot outside, and the reporter that came from CN2 actually blacked out at the fire station.
Oh, great.
Kenny and the fireman, right to her aid, made sure she was okay, so. But hats off to those guys and to all our firefighters and public safety staff for a great job with what they're doing. Last but not least, Chief Parker asked me to share this, and we will have this information starting. If it's not there today, it definitely will be by tomorrow up on our website. This is from the FBI. Law enforcement agencies are seeing enhanced efforts by criminals to scam taxpayers out of their hard-earned money by impersonating Internal Revenue Service and Treasury Department employees during unsolicited telephone calls and robo-calls. These scammers are demanding cash payments for unpaid taxes via prepaid debit cards, money orders, or wire transfers from their banks. According to the IRS, the agency generally first contacts taxpayers by mail, not by phone, concerning owed taxes, and it will never ask for payments using a prepaid debit card, money order, or wire transfer. So again, the IRS is not going to call you first, they're going to send you something via mail. Additionally, the latest scam has a little twist to the typical IRS-type phone and email scams. This involves an email that tells the recipient that the sender has agreed to kill the recipient for $30,000, but the hit will not take place if the recipient will send him $20,000.
All right, then.
People are actually paying this, which is why they keep doing it. So, yeah, if you get these types of calls, alert PD, give us a call, let us know. Don't pay anybody over the phone, don't give out your credit card, debit card information, or anything of the like. So, Mayor, that concludes my notes for tonight.
Thank you, Charlie. Does anybody have anything for Charlie?
I had one question, Charlie.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that the cog was helping work on a map of our area to showcase existing as well as future developments. Very friendly type of map. Okay.
We have what existing on our site right now. It's, I looked at a draft updating it today, I should have that back tomorrow. So we'll have an updated draft, including the developments discussed tonight.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, thank you, Susan. Item number nine on the agenda are public comments. Are there any further public comments?
Mayor, I've got your PRT commission.
Okay.
Based on council's vote, it is, what I've got here is Thomas Duffy, Trish Snyder, Christina Wilson, Rebecca, Rebecca Wilson, and Ben Allman for the five positions currently for the PRT commission.
Council entertain a motion to approve those members on the PRT commission. I'll make that motion.
Second.
There you go. Motion by me, seconded by Dottie Hirsty, any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, seeing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Now we'll go on to item number 10 on the agenda, which is council comments. Dottie, you have anything?
Just a couple things, reiterate that the 4th of July festivities, as always, are great fun, and everybody that works so hard on it, it really shows in everything that you do, so thank you so much for that. You know, I guess I want to, you know, repeat what the chief says. You know, we all know what's going on in the world, and it seems crazier every minute of every day. But, you know, I think all of us, and I imagine most of the citizens, if not all of us, we really do appreciate the Police Department and the Fire and Rescue, and everybody that takes good care of us. And you're loved and cared for in the city, and if there's anybody that can, if we can do anything for you, you please let us know. And just be safe out there, and know we've got your back, and we know that you have ours, so we really do appreciate it. The spraying for Zika, I don't know, I think it's a little bit crazy, but what do I know? I definitely agree with the mayor that we shouldn't be paying for it. I would really have liked a whole lot more information about it before the county came tramping in on our property, what I consider our property, to do this, but if it's just the plain old mosquito spraying that people can pay to get done in their own backyard, I guess there's no harm in it. It just seems kind of crazy since we don't know if the person lives here, if they left here, if they were here a month ago, or they were here yesterday. And besides, if they got bitten by a mosquito here, the mosquito's probably long gone, but maybe an ounce of prevention, I don't know. Hometown heroes, again, appreciate to the Fire Department for going above and beyond the call to help that little boy return to his room. I've had a mice, a mouse infestation recently, and I'm afraid to go into my room, so I may be calling somebody over to help me in a minute. Charlie, you mentioned scams about the IRS. I had a funny one, or maybe not so funny. Now there's a scam about health question, you get an email, and it's a health questionnaire, health benefits questionnaire, and if you answer that, they're going to send me $100, so ignore that too because it's obviously just a scam. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Dottie. Ryan?
I got nothing.
Jen?
I was just going to announce that the Living Memorial Gardens is not having any group workdays upcoming, but there are plenty of individual opportunities. And this is open to anybody, any day of the week, anytime. So if you'd like to help, and you can have a green or brown thumb. Actually, Philip Snelling is here, and he's with Beautification Committee, the co-chair, and we have Michelle McGuire, and they can give you some to-do lists, but you can always contact us through the city website.
Thank you, Jen. David?
Just to echo what Dottie said about our police, great job, support them all the way. I've got a blue tape on the back of my car that says, "I support the police," and everywhere I go, people are giving me the thumbs up, so they do too. Great 4th of July, our grand marshal was hospitalized on July 5th.
Oh, no.
Ralph, 89-year-old Ralph Smith was hospitalized, the next day, fell out of bed and wasn't able to get up. He's in, he was in the hospital until yesterday or the day before, now he's in rehab. Should be home this week, I hope.
Did he break something?
He didn't break anything, but he hasn't been able to walk for years since then, but
Oh, God bless him.
We're going to hope he gets better. I'll go see him tomorrow, let everybody know. That's all I got.
Just, you know, I'm going to echo again, the July 4th is the thing that we do here in Tika K, you know, and we do it so well. There are people who come from all over, you know, leaving the Lennon Center on the 4th, going home, saw a lot of North Carolina plate, so people are understanding that we do it, and we do it so well. And it's been a tradition that has gone on in this city, you know, since the city's inception. And it's just phenomenal, the job that people put in, the volunteers, and just people getting involved in what goes on. And PD, one of the pleasures I have of being mayor is to swear on the new police officers. And they always get asked the exact same question from me. And that question is, "Why are you doing this?" And the response from every one of them has been the exact same thing, to protect and serve this community. And if you haven't recently, I suggest you do. Go up and shake their hands and thank them for what they do for us. That's all I have. Council entertain a motion in regards to item number 11.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we table item 11, executive session, for legal advice as it relates to golf carts.
Motion by Dottie Hirsty, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Item number 12 on the agenda is adjournment, council entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
A motion by Ryan Richard, seconded by Dottie Hirsty, any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, seeing we're saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.